This conference will now be recorded.
You know, I can't remember the last time we had no one in the audience. So just to start off, I'll take roles. So in attendance physically on site today, we've got pops here, lobbies here. Doug Banks is here and then attending virtually, we've got Supervisor Tinkle and Supervisor Guy. I just need a motion for special privileges under circumstance.
Find the exceptional circumstances allow for participation by Supervisors Guide. That's what I meant to say.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take a stab and ask Laura is directing, Gary is out sick today. Do we have any speakers? None in the room?
No, nothing in the chat and nothing in the room.
If there is someone from the residents or from the public that would wish to speak, you just throw in the chat, please, a request and we will execute on that.
Also, Laura, do you have any emails from anyone or faxes from anybody wishing to comment on anything in the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you.
All right, great. We will step into staff reports. We will start with District Council.
Briefly, the first item is with regards to the Pelican Reserve DRI Development Order Amendment. There was a planning board hearing that was conducted and then this past Monday, the City Council authorized advertising for a hearing on the considerations. It's January 31st and the planning boards recommended language to the City Council and the city staff's recommendation to City Council is not something that I'll call the team. You know, P-PAC Services District and the consultants are comfortable with. So what you have in front of you is we'll call it combined language. Steve Damsec took our FDA language in the application, the language in the staff recommendation, and then did what's called a combined. And this is what the group is going to circulate and hand to and carry with and promote with the various City Council members as we contact them in advance of the City Council hearing so that it can achieve what we think P-PAC and the residents of Pelican Reserve want. And it takes care of the proud residents as well as the district. And the concern was the city is still living in the past, I'll call it. It was difficult, the level of irritation, I'll call it, with the city staff, still mentioning what happened way back when with the Citizens Alliance and the way that was handled. And so they, the city staff, were a little bit difficult at times. And what is proposed in front of you, I just wanted to have the boards in a sense blessing. Mr. Tinkles looked at it and he's been involved with the team. This is the language that we're going to promote to the city staff, to two things, I mean to City Council, to advance the cause that we all, I think, are in favor of. And secondly, from the district's perspective, what's important and from the residents' perspective, what's important, based upon the analysis by Bond Council, in order to use this proceeds from the sale of the fire impact fee credits, which were from a bond issue for, I'll call it, old Pelican or the first phase of Pelican Preserve, then there has to be a mechanism by which those folks benefit from this road. And the way that that occurs is not just with the access issue. It's the district owning, operating, maintaining it and the availability for emergency evacuation purposes. So that's a critical component from the standpoint of utilization of the funds. So that's why this is drafted the way it is. It's fun to keep your pride. If you have any of the comments, just feel free to call me or give me a call. But again, it's a good team to work with and.
We don't expect any problems with this language?
I don't know. The city staff may push back, but the question is convincing the City Council that this is the appropriate way to go. And Carol Brockie has been, as I understand it from Rich Rittenberg on a call we had there or two ago, is that Carol's already reached out to the Ward Six Council member and had contact with that individual and will set up meetings so that we can start with the Ward Six Council member and get her input on various.
Do we know when it's going to be on the agenda for the?
I don't know the exact item, but it's January 31st. We will send that around as soon as we get the agenda provided. Because it may be helpful also to have a number of Pelican Reserve residents there.
That's why I was asking.
And this time we're green shirts.
If that's what's required, the community.
It might be. I mean, I think that Nicole and Bill Porter still feel the red shirts behind them.
Okay.
From the last time. I got that sense. Ed, do you have any other comments on that?
No, Tony, I think your combined language is superior to what we had originally and the one that the staff had. Just, it was not a very good rendition that they put together. They mentioned Pelican Reserve, but they didn't say a word about Gateway being able to use the road to go the other way. I mean, it just had mistakes in it. I think this combined language is perfect.
Thank you.
So is there any action, Tony, you need?
No, this is just more of information or if y'all had any objections, any, but in my opinion, it's consistent with the agreement that we have and consistent with initial application and what the desires of the parties to the agreement are and the residents. And Steve Damsec and P-PAC can talk for those. On the Kyle Pallone, that was the issue with regards to the new revised utility easement location. And part of the holdup there was language in the conservation area maintenance agreement. I think we resolved that. There were some questions that Mr. Robertson from Gateway 2012 LLC had. Steve Agapi was trying to do a nice graphic that indicated where the storm water would flow and the approved plans. And then I edited the agreement accordingly. So I think I'm just going to file that.
They approved the red line. They approved the red line version. They're just asking for a clean one to sign.
Right. That's what I was getting to him. He's just going to be doing that probably tomorrow or Monday so we can get that signed. That way we take care of the easement and the agreement both at the same time. So that makes Mr. Hall happy so Kenny's not sending me nasty grams. He's been good. I appreciate that. On the Palazzo Road, I'm slogging through a bunch of documents. There were a number of exceptions in the title commitment, not unusual reference to the number of documents. All those documents, about 90% of them, in my opinion, have no real adverse impact to the district owning that. There's a few documents I just need to double check on. Now I'll come back to the board. The idea, my goal is to have, come back to the board with a memo at the next board meeting with regards to that roadway conveyance. It's just I need to double check on a couple of things. I have had no response to the 558 letter. I'd even sent a follow-up letter saying, hey, you received this port line. And next board meeting, we're planning on coming back with memorandum as to that issue as to how the board may want to see what the budget would be. And I'm working with Kenny on a couple of utility issues. He can probably report on those. And on the FPL easement, contacted Charles Mann and he thought the district was going to do the update and title work. And to the survey, I'll just double check the documents and try to get that ready so we can have that finished by February. I'd like to get that wrapped up also for the land south of Gateway Boulevard. And then by the time we have the issue resolved on the Pelican Reserve DRI, then we get that northern piece. And lastly, working with Steve Bloom and Laura on the First Horizon, also setting up some team meetings so we can start getting the team together to do the validation. And that's all.
Okay. So you come in, did you want to speak?
No, I just came down in case anybody has questions or anything.
All right. I just didn't know if you were running late and then I just want to give you an opportunity if you did. Okay, do we have Stephen or Tetra Tech on?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, guys. Today we have three task authorizations that are on the agenda and a task authorization update. The first task authorization is titled HB 53, Wastewater and Stormwater Needs Analysis. So recently, the state of Florida passed a new House Bill, House Bill 53, which requires all of these local government communities to conduct a needs analysis on their water and wastewater systems. I'm sorry, wastewater and stormwater systems. So this is going to be due June of this year. So this task will allow us to work with staff and to collect all of the data on the system. They're essentially looking for the age of the system, size, general accounting of your complete inventory of the system, and then going through and seeing, you know, what needs to be improved, get it on a schedule and make a determination if anything needs to be renewed or replaced. There used to be, it used to be like the Gatsby, I think 40, maybe Ed's familiar with it, but it's very similar to that program. Anyone have any questions for me?
Yeah, I got a question. Just add. I'm looking at this, read that whole article that this statute's about or this statute's talking about. We don't mention, because I suppose we don't have any ownership of the wastewater treatment plant, but will somebody else be identifying the wastewater treatment plant portion of this? Or will the county do that themselves to identify all this is the collection system? Nothing about the wastewater treatment plant is, do they do that themselves?
Yep, we're only, Gateway is only responsible for your own facility. So everyone in the county will conduct their own needs analysis reporting and then submit it to the county. The county will be collecting all of the other communities' information and then submitting that to the state. So the county would be required to do their own analysis of their infrastructure. By all of theirs.
Do they have samples or examples of the format? I know I went through all the stuff that you guys sent. Is answering?
Yes and no. They have one for stormwater currently. I don't know if Danny's checked in the last couple of weeks, but at the time of writing this, they didn't have the one for wastewater out yet, but they will be providing a format they want to see. But the one for stormwater is already live.
I didn't have any other questions.
Yeah, just stormwater for the entire Gateway system, including Pelican Analysis?
Yes, sir.
So we fill this information out and it goes to the county?
Goes to the county and then they will collect everyone else's in the county and then they will submit that to the EDR, the Economic and Demographic Research.
Stephen, the only difference between this and the task authorization in the meeting book is the timeframe for the deliverables. It's 159 days versus 180. And that's in order to achieve the June 30th deadline?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the 159 days puts us at June 15th. So we can.
Okay.
You're looking for a motion. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion to second. All the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I think that was all.
Okay, the next task authorization, this was brought up to us a couple of weeks ago. It turns out there's been some concerns about the roundabout on Griffin Drive located next to the high school. There's some concerns about adequacy of the size and the location of the signage along the roundabout. We were asked to prepare a task authorization to do this minimal effort to see if it meets minimum design requirements for size and sign location. We have in there to do some auto turn analysis. It's computer-like model design just to make sure that it meets the minimum requirements for sizing. Do you have any questions on that one?
So Stephen, just out of curiosity, if there is a question about a county bill, DOT, wouldn't those inquiries go to the county and the county would facilitate their own kind of audit, engineering audit? Why would we do that independently?
I agree with that. You know, we were asked to just, you know, give a stab at this and see what it would take to, you know, for us to take a look at it. But ultimately, they owned the road in the roundabout. So yeah, I mean, you could also just call them up and say, hey, we have a concern with this roundabout. Like, can you take another look at it? I think that would go a long way too.
Yeah, and again, I'm not an engineer, but if there is ever a dispute on the entity that designed, is there a name for that? Is it, how do you, is it just a dispute or is it a validation of, you know, as built or? That's what my point is. Something had, someone had to sign off on. So I think, I mean, I agree that there have been concerns and I think this board has expressed some concerns. Is, but I think the first step is notifying the county that there are some concerns. Now, they might say, well, what are your concerns? How do you validate that? And we don't have engineering specs or anything that is data to justify our concerns. They may just push it back to us. But, you know.
Right.
Ask you or I'd even ask Tony, is there a formal process to audit the, you know?
Well, I've got a question that's along that line, Doug. Steve, who designed the roundabout? The county or the schools engineer? And the county just accepted it? Who had responsibility for the design?
I think I remember seeing it on the school plans, which was Johnson was the engineer for the utilities. I don't know who did the design of the roundabout, to answer your question. I think I remember seeing it on the school plan.
Okay, I thought Johnson Engineering did the design of the roundabout for the school and paid for by the school.
That's the assumption that I'm under too, Ed. But again, I wasn't as close to the design components, but that's, you know, so are you saying the first thing we do is we validate the design from Johnson? We reach out to them and say, hey, we have some concerns. Can you just, can you validate? Before we go to the county or we do it in parallel? What do you, what is your recommendation?
I was going a little bit different, Doug. Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. But did somebody at the county actually do a review? Or did they basically accept what the school came up with and it was it? In other words, there was no due diligence done by the DOT at all on behalf of the county?
I mean, I think their general permitting processes, they have LC DOT review any road plans.
Hey, Doug and Ed, this is Danny. I'm in Stephen's office too. I mean, you know, this gives you an idea of what it would take if we did it. And we're certainly not advocating to do this. You've got this and if you decide to move forward with it, you can. But the first step might be simply to reach out to the county if that hasn't been done already and just to, you know, express the concerns from things that have been, you know, witnessed there.
No, I, yeah, Danny. I understand the people behind it. I think there's a step before that and we just need to determine what that step is. Is it engaging the county? Is it engaging the school or is it engaging Johnson Engineering? I don't know. And I don't know who does to answer that question.
I would say the county because it's their road.
Their road. It's their road. They approved it. So the fact that, you know, whoever it was designed by and the fact that the school, you know, paid for it, that's really between the county and both entities. But at the end of the day, it's the county's road and the county, you know, it's county road. Bottom line, it's county road. So they own it to maintain that roundabout now. So it should go to them.
Okay, so if we've identified who we need to go to, who approaches them? Is that something from council?
I think it's probably the state staff or management or engineering. Maybe, you know, like Stephen just touching base.
Yeah, okay, Stephen. So can you and Danny kind of coordinate to reach out to the county to express our concerns around that design and see if they can just validate their, you know, the permit sign off or whatever the final review would be?
Yeah, we have some contacts we can call and just kind of gently bring the subject up.
Okay. And then if we get pushed back, then we may have to go the route of actually having some data and get this task authorization to validate on our end. So we have a little bit more concrete ammunition.
Yeah.
Well, the level of effort of the, both the Commerce Lakes and the Griffin Drive intersections and those roundabouts is so significantly different than the level of effort put together in front of the school. It's apples and oranges. It doesn't even look like the same design or the same concept of putting it together. One looked very haphazardly done, son of an El Chepo deal. I was just wondering, is, did the county accept just cart launch what the school presented? And they looked the other way for all kinds of other things that we're now looking at as having doubts of why it was built the way it was?
Well, I mean, I think at this point, it's, you know, that's playing forensic engineering. I mean, it's been built. They own it. Just express those concerns and ask if they can, you know, ask what they did and if they can do an analysis and go from there.
One other thing is, I think you're right. I mean, I'm looking at the record drawings of that roundabout are actually online and accessible. And it looks like they're prepared by Johnson Engineering, as-built survey. So I can send that to you, Stephen, by email?
I have. I have those.
You have the as-built?
I, yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the action for task authorization 2022-07, we will, we're going to pin that with the action for Tetra Tech to reach out to the county to express our issues and concerns over the design for validation and verification. Stephen, if you want to move to the next 08?
Yes, sir. This task authorization is for streetlight review inside of Pelican Preserve. I think Bob reached out to Danny or someone at Pelican Preserve reached out to us and they've noticed that there is a kind of a lighting difference between the intersections in Pelican Preserve, namely Pelican Preserve and the intersection of Cypress Grove. So this task authorization, it'll allow us to analyze the lighting that's at that intersection and see if it meets the typical lighting standards.
Yeah, by way of background, at the intersection of the golf club and the town center, there's probably eight globes, light globes. Down a quarter of a mile to the intersection of Cypress Grove and there's one. And this came to my attention through the President's Council and P-PAC where they've recognized that this is a very clear night. So we want to understand what it should be, which is the purpose of the task authorization. And then they'll move forward.
All right, any more discussion on this item? Is this funded through?
P-PAC.
P-PAC, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And I'll make a recommendation that we approve task authorization 2208.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, Stephen, next.
All right, right now I just have the task authorization update. First on the list is the Phase Two Year One Lake Bank Restoration Project. Yesterday, we did a walkthrough of Lake 93 in Daniel's Preserve. The lake looks really good. We just had some minor comments on some sodding and a little bit of restoration at the staging area, but they are substantially complete at this point. I know it's a 75% complete, but they are, they're substantially complete now. So we're just working on final punch list and that will put a pin in the, these two task authorizations, 2003 and 2004, once we finalize.
And Stephen, just out of curiosity, what's the, how are we to plan on this as far as timeframe? Are we favorable or on?
As far as overall, I mean, we bid this out in December, January of 20. So January of 2020, we got bids for this project. So it's two years in the making to get to where we are. But, you know, with that being said, we had to work with a lot of challenges with the weather. So, you know, this is a lake bank project, so we can only do water or work when the water is low or when there is a lake that's a good candidate for pumping. And not all of them are. So it has taken a long time, but I think overall, we were able to work with the contractors to hold their price and to get the work done in more favorable weather conditions. So I think overall, I think we've learned things. I think we've learned that the drain boxes aren't always the best option if they're not already there. We're also tried a little pilot on this lake to include some laterals. So I think it's been a net positive for the community and overall the project was a success. Okay, on the flowway weir adjustments, we are going to be submitting our final response to the RAI for the original three weirs. We also have Pond 38. It's in design right now. We are proposing a pre-op meeting with the district in the next week or two. And then we will continue permitting that. Once we submit tomorrow for the original three, once we get final approval from the district, then we can work on construction documents. Pelican Preserve Road Improvements, I've been working with a gentleman in Pelican Preserve to get this one closed out. The city, he spoke to, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he spoke to the city and they said that if he finds a contractor, they will reopen the permit and then do the final inspection and close it out. So that one's still in the works. The other ones here on the utility relocation in the roundabout, we're waiting on the county right now. The other ones here are Fred Middle's jobs with some of the utility improvements. All of these are in design right now. We are still waiting on FPN Al easement acquisition for the irrigation and force main. Let's see here, Phase Two Year Two Lake Bank Restoration. We have a draft.
Hey, pause for one second, please.
Yes, sir.
The force main. I know we had some concerns on the bore impacting road condition. Where do we land on that assessment? There was, there was some concerns. There was potentially some give in the road or I don't know how we would describe it, but.
Oh, the contractor agreed to repair that. So that contract, or that project has been completed and closed out. But the contractor did, they met with the county. We were there and they agreed to fix the road.
And did they identify root calls? Was it just give or? No, no.
No.
We don't know if. Oh, so they haven't, they've agreed to do it, but they haven't. All right. So we'll stop that to identify, is it? I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but okay. Yeah, that's fine. Thanks. You can keep going.
Okay, Phase Two Year Two Lake Bank Restoration. This is the next round of lake banks. So we prepared a draft advertisement for requests for bids. So that should go out soon. Irrigation modeling and force main modeling, Fred and Kenny are working on that one and I think they're going to pick it back up in the middle of this month for some field data collection. The bond validation assistance, I think tomorrow we have our first meeting. Tony, I and Laura are going to have a meeting with Stephen Bloom, I believe, to talk about this project tomorrow.
And if you can just provide some clarity for me, because I'm drawing a blank here. With the Phase Two Lake Bank Restoration, did we agree that we would apply rock to the high watermark and sod from there on up? I just want to make sure I was clear.
The way I have it right now is six inches above high water. I mean, we can, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, if you guys give us, you know, a signal one way or the other, I can, I can move that easily.
The only reason why I bring it up is that I couldn't remember where we landed. We had some discussion before we, you know, to, you know, bids. I just want to make sure we're very clear on that design. Because I know there was some discussion and six inches doesn't seem egregious to me. I think, I think what we were looking at before is, you know, additional rock and was it needed?
Seven, eight feet.
Yeah, just six inches. I'm okay with it.
Well, keep in mind, if you're going six inches and you're a four to one slope, that's that's 24 inches on the horizontal up the D-R, which I think is a very reasonable number. That's 24 inches on the horizontal up the D R, which I think is a very, uh, reasonable number.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all clear on what?
My recollection is your, same as yours, that it's going to be a much taller.
Yeah, that.
Six inches into two feet, whatever you're expressing, about six feet up.
So, but if we're talking about six inches at a four to one slope to its point, that is still.
Two feet, two feet.
So we're, we're comfortable with two, anything?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Stephen. I just want to make sure we're clear. So it sounds like we're good there.
Okay, 10-4. Um, that is it for me. Does anyone have any questions? All righty.
Thank you, sir. Okay, what's item, uh, 3C, District Manager Report, um, with Gary being out, who's? Cal, are you presenting?
Hi, Gary, who's got a copy or, I put a copy in the, uh, packet and answer questions or, or goddamn, uh, or I can get that one. But I'm not sure I appear to present it.
Okay, is there, um, do you want?
It was seen, you know, prime of faces, whatever you read it, I didn't have any questions with it.
With the district manager report?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, while we're here, why don't we talk just for a minute, Cal, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, let's just talk for a minute about the, uh, the information that you sent over regarding the district manager search. Um, so, and I'll kind of summarize things. I, I would imagine everyone's read it, went through it. So based on the email, uh, we were at a point where viable candidates coming through. Um, Kyle and I spoke this morning. Uh, I think the question that he was asking is there's, and this is not unusual, uh, that there's variations in the profile of, of candidates that could be a potential fit. What Kyle was asking for, do we have any, uh, any specific direction based on what we're seeing come through? What I would say is at this point, if we've got viable candidates, then we should be interviewing them all that meet minimal qualifications. And then based on that, we determine through our input, which direction we go in. I'm hesitant to, because I think a job description is the job description. Now, anytime you come up with a job description, you, more times than not, you will not get a hundred percent of that. The perfect fit, right? So I think as you see candidates come through, as you interview them, assess them, then you make a determination as you get down to a final two, which direction you want to go in. And it's, again, based on my experience, it is okay to have two candidates that have slightly different areas of expertise or value that they bring to that position. So what my recommendation would be is one, we continue with, with the search ongoing and, and Kyle will, uh, will continue along with staff to identify candidates. Uh, we could talk about what we're doing today, but what my recommendation would be is we've got three candidates, um, one internal, two external. The two external do have, uh, different backgrounds, which could, could determine which direction we go in, but I would like to proceed with interviewing all three candidates. Um, where we need to land today and what I'd like to get the board and staff's approval on is what that interviewing process would look like. Now, for external candidates, I think for the most part, Cal, you have at least had some interaction with, uh, with the candidates on some level.
Vetting.
Yeah, so let's say it's initial vetting. What I would recommend is, uh, and again, this is just for both and I'm open to, to input. What I would, is the chair do the first round of, uh, of interviewing. Um, the second round would be a staff panel and that would include Kenny, uh, and either Gary, Kyle or Scott. Um, and the only reason I'm pulling Scott in is because we do have another open position that there could be opportunities. Uh, if I look at these profiles, you know, one of the candidates could be a potential fit for another opening. So, um, that's why I would just, and they can work through, I don't think we need all three, but you know, we could do that with. Um, I've excluded Laura in this piece because, uh, Laura's one of the, uh, is the internal candidate. So we have to, uh, we have to pull you out of the process at this point. The third, the next step, based on the vetting through the chair and vetting through staff would go to board panel. Which I would imagine the candidates that we have today, unless they fail miserably, they would probably pass through. We're not, I think the first, so the chair and the staff panel is an additional level of kind of qualifications. But if candidates meet minimum qualification and we feel good about their, you know, their experience, their DNA and traits, and if we feel like they're a good candidate, we would pass them through to the board with their review, and then we would do a final assessment. And it would be a panel review with all the board.
What kind of timing, Steph's wanted to do pretty quickly?
Yes. I mean, I would say, uh, from this point to, let's say, we've got three viable candidates today. What I would look for is within the next two weeks, three would be at the most, depending if there's some scheduling issues, but we would go through, the chair review, staff, uh, that can be done and probably the second week would be the board. You know, just so we could provide input to the board. So you're, you know, you've got at least.
Individually or collectively?
Collectively, it would be a panel. So it would be a group discussion. Yes, sir. Are we allowed to do that?
That's, yeah, I have, my antenna was up, my radar was up because sunshine law. Whether or not that panel may need to meet, you know, public meeting notice, uh, because you're delegating a certain finding.
If that's the case, uh, if that's the case, if you can just, if you can.
I, I'm not sure I can do that now. I mean, quick, right?
No, 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 but I'm, I mean, it's fine. It's a takeaway. If we don't, if we can't do a panel, then we would set up individual conversations with the board. Now, what I try not, what I try and, and I'm trying to do here is not have a candidate have to go through eight interviews. Uh, but again, for government, most, most of these individuals understand the process and have probably gone through this. Um, and we, you and I talked about this as well, that most candidates are, are would, if they've been in this environment, they're used to doing a panel interview with the board, or at least interviewing with the board as part of the final. So, and I think we could talk more about, I think we need to go through, Tony, once we get to that phase, uh, is what questions we can and cannot ask of the board, uh, and just providing some guidance, uh, to the board. Cause again, we're the, a final interview for the board is probably at that point really just assessing, you know, their skillset should have already been vetted. So it's a matter of, are they, are they the right fit? And, uh, more reasons why we would not hire them as opposed to why we would, uh, the other way around. So, um, Ed and Bill, are you guys comfortable with, with that approach?
I'm, I'm looking at it almost totally a different way. Uh, why are we in such a rush to go through this when we haven't really done any national search whatsoever and given a time to identify this? Uh, to me, I'd much rather hear what Cal's, uh, deals are and answer a question is that who is doing our search? And what are we searching for? At this point in time, I think we're looking for two positions that not because we want to, but because we got ourselves in a corner on, and that is a public works position and a district manager position. I'd much rather have Cal and his staff, uh, interview or talk to the, uh, three people that have submitted just to give us an idea of what their limitations are on that district manager at the same time searching for other possible candidates. I'd rather see us put more of a full court press on the, uh, public works person, uh, and same thing, interview these people to determine if there's one that's possibility on that such that, uh, we, we buy time before we just rush into this. I, I don't see what the, the hurry is other than the fact I would love to know who's doing the searching. Uh, I'd like to have, uh, Cal's people give us a proposal for actually doing this search for these deals and, uh, interviewing and doing everything it takes to advise us as to what their recommendations are before we leap in and be in such a rush to, to hire somebody because I'm not, uh, sold yet that, uh, we've done all of our, uh, research.
Well, here's, here's the thing, and, and Cal's and his, his team are still actively.
Well, we put things somewhat on a hold till I could get some feedback from you. We have not advertised in ICMA.
But why would you put it on hold? Well, you have the job description. That's the same job description.
That was actually exactly what the direction we gave them the last time to go ahead and go and look for it, not on the.
Yeah, I mean, there's, regardless of whether.
There are ads out there.
Yeah, so regardless of whether.
Mr. Chairman?
One, one second, Bill. Regardless of whether we identify candidate that is heavy on the utilities side or heavy on the government or whatever, we've got a job description.
Mm-hmm.
We search for that job description.
Okay.
You know, uh, and then based on what comes in, what we, what we find, then we make final selection. Uh, I think if you're looking for a direction on, if you are actively pursuing, who do you pursue? Will you pursue district managers, city managers, city planners? You know, that's the profile. Those profiles, if I were to talk to you, talk to Scott, talk to, um, Joe De Servo, probably every district here in Florida is going to have a little bit different background.
Sure.
You know, so that's, that's just going to be inherent in the role. But I would say, don't, don't slow down, keep going. And expand your search as broadly as you can. And I think our agreement was that you would do this existing umbrella. And then as we, you know, identified a candidate and moved forward, we would look at compensation, which would be in parallel with what we would have done for, for an agency. Now, Bill, to, to, or Ed, to your point, um, the reason why I don't think there's a sense of urgency to fill the position, there is a sense of urgency to get people in the process that have expressed interest. And the reason for that is because of the existing environment and the market demand. If we sit on these candidates, they will not, they won't be around. You know, we can't sit on these for a month. So we get them in process. I'm not saying we force ourselves to make a final decision, but we get them engaged. We get them in the process. That's due to.
I hardly think we've been rushing this.
No, we're four months in. We're, we have four months of vacancy. So there is no rush.
That's right.
And I don't think district managers aren't falling out of the sky and they're not applying, uh, at, at a high rate just because I think it's, you know, this is.
Cal had, Cal had given us the, uh, the deal of the two, uh, option one and option two. And as I told him, uh, earlier today, I, I just don't think we're at the point yet to where we have to limit ourselves. I would like to see the, uh, the proposal go out, revise it and blend it. And.
Why don't we have to give you a better word in here, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Well, first of all, I, I think the point that you just made that we owe it to these, uh, prospects to give them at least a first hearing, uh, it's only the, the courteous thing to do. And you never know how somebody is going to, uh, interview. Sometimes you find a diamond in the rough. The other thing is about, uh, being in a rush, we're paying premier $15,000 a month. And I think that, uh, that in and of itself says that we should not be sitting around waiting for, uh, more people to, uh, apply when we haven't had a, given the ones that have the first interview. Thank you.
Yes.
Here's just.
Go ahead.
So I had sent out an email to Gary because there, actually with the candidates that we have here, I wanted to interview with them and then I had a question in regards to.
I can't hear Flavia.
Can you hear now?
Yeah, that's better.
That's, that's better. Thank you.
So I had reached out to Gary, uh, last week in regards to wanting to interview, uh, two candidates that were, that, you know, I thought they would be good for us.
These two or?
Uh, yes, yes. Not in terms of, because I was not aware of it. And I just felt like a little bit of pushback from Gary because my direction was let's set this up. I would like to interview those two. Do you have preset questions? And he pretty much came back with, uh, we're going to talk about this on the next meeting and based on whatever you guys tell us, then we'll go from there. So, uh, every time I ask, when it comes around to the district manager, what are we doing? The questions are so vague. So what I did, and I, I did send an email to Tony, I reached out, I, I was just searching a ton of district managers. And I came up with a document that which is, which actually has all these districts in Florida. And it has over a hundred district managers with all of their email addresses and all their phone number. I don't see, why can't we create a blank template email that says, hey, we're looking for someone. Here's kind of what we're looking for. And this just goes out for, I mean, there are 225 districts. I mean, I, I cannot see that we couldn't get at least five good applications. I mean, this is something so easy.
Well, in, in my approach, again, it's kind of coming from this industry would be, I, I would love to see, you know, as, as opposed to doing a blanket email to these folks, I, you know, reach out and look for referrals and.
I, I hadn't had a chance to research it until today. My concern is I don't want this district to be accused of interfering with an advantageous business relationship or contractual relationship because I don't know whether or not some of those other entities, the parties have non-compete agreements or they probably don't, right? Or certain agreements with regards to, uh, and so I'm just concerned about that kind of blanket email going to all of district.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, so.
Well, we did advertise in FASD and, uh, so they should see that. All of the, uh, special assessment district managers, uh, are out there.
Cal, is there a list, sir, for local government managers? For example, there's a list, sir, for local government attorneys in Florida. And I routinely, and I, and I routinely get.
Yeah.
Most of those are, are companies. So, you know, it's one of their employees that they've assigned. And it might just be, you know, someone that's the owner of the company.
Well, it would, it actually tells you, it tells you if it's a company that they hire or is it employee of the district. So it's, I mean, I, I looked through it and I was really surprised with the amount of detail. I, from this list of over a hundred, I put 10 on 15 that they were actually had either a resume online that I was able to look. And from those two, there were three more that I thought that we could reach out.
I, I can reach out to them.
It's not like recreating the will. It, it, we had a lot of information out there.
We currently have and you send it to every email that's on there, they can respond or not respond if they find it of interest.
So, so I think there's, I think we can work in, in conjunction and have premier help execute and even have staff involved if we need to. But I, I think there's a much larger play and I think these are the things that we've, you know, I, I was hoping that we would have been able to do, you know, in the last four months. But I do know that you're a management company, you're not an agency. Like, we understand that. And I think we were trying to tap into your expertise, knowing that you're not a staffing agency. This is not what you do, you know, really as your, as your primary focus. So what I would like to see happen is one, I think the existing candidates that we have, I'd like to get everyone's consensus to at least start the process. We will continue an aggressive search. We have a nice list of 225, uh, contacts, and that's the way I would treat them, is contacts at this point. Um, we continue to look at opportunities to post. Um, I think if you're looking on a direction for the job description, I'd stick with the job description. And as we get candidates coming in, then we can filter out based on their skillset. Now, I think there is an opportunity, and you brought this up and I appreciate it, that even the three candidates we have, there's one that might be viable for, um, that public works, uh, which I, which Kyle and I talked today, and it might even be a, a hybrid position, which might be more of an operations that oversees public works, but also has the project management experience and doing some other things. So we have the ability to get very creative here. I've always been an advocate of hire talent first. You hire talent, those that are coachable, you know, all those different things. You don't always have to have the, you know, the, the depth of functional experience in some areas. Some areas you do, some areas you don't. So if we've got an opportunity to interview a couple of candidates that have talent and skillset, one is internal, then I think we should do that. And we might find, might be able to kill two birds with one stone in this, in this search. Uh, but we don't.
Why can't we, why can't we have, uh, uh, Cal do the, uh, let's say the exploratory, exploratory contact with these candidates that we have right now so as to not to keep them on the hook, but to be able to get back to us to with what their, uh, thoughts are on interviewing these people, especially in light of the sunshine. If we can't do it without doing it and having all five board members in the position, we're going to have to be doing this one at a time. And this is going to get to be very cumbersome to be doing. Let's just let one person, let Cal do it, do his interview of each of these, come back to us and report where we're at and what the, uh, uh, limitations of each of these candidates might be.
Well, I think you already kind of initially done that. Uh, one second, Tony. So the board would only interview finalists. You wouldn't interview every candidate. Like if, the, the way the process should go is premier does an initial review. So they would identify minimally qualified and recommend those people to go from the initial to the first phase, which that's where I, I volunteered myself to come in and do the, the first set. What I'm doing is I'm not, I'm not striking people for experience, what, because I think that needs to be reviewed by staff, but um, I will be, you know, an additional part of the initial vetting process. And then from there it goes to staff review and then final candidates would go to the board. So we're not, so we're not, you guys won't be interviewing 10 or 15 people. I mean, it would be three, you know, three to five at best, depending on how long it takes us to find the right candidate.
And hopefully from this latest initiative with the list, we may get some more.
May get some more.
Yeah, yeah. At least we're moving forward. If, if the board is inclined to want to have a panel of staff members, I would suggest that there be written parameters so as to, there are a number of court cases I'm just quickly finding as to what the parameters need to be.
We'll have pretty fine questions.
No, not to, to not have sunshine law issues. I'm talking about the panel, if you want to have a staff panel do some of the interviews. It's not to, you, you have to be careful how it's couched as to what they're going to do and what their actions are going to be in order to not have a sunshine.
Okay, so give me an example of. Okay. So give me an example of.
Well, okay, I'm just trippy trying to read it. Sorry. I did not know that.
Why don't we follow up? Uh, you know, what, do you want to?
Give us directions.
Yeah, give us some directions. We know that.
I will do a memo to the board outlining these cases as to the approach from the staff panel discussion.
Yeah. And what I would say is, let's, let's focus more on the guidelines that staff needs to operate with. Here's what they should be doing. Here's what they should not do in order to violate sunshine.
And sooner rather than later.
Oh, no, this is going, oh, no, it's going to be based upon the court case, attorney general's opinion. Here's what, here's how a staff panel can, interviews can be conducted. So, and what the outcome of what they do is provided, how that's provided to avoid sunshine.
And just to make it simple, you know, I don't think we need references to statutes or anything like that. So if you can keep it.
Don't send a phone book, Doug. Now, I, I, I will, I will make a lot of footnotes. I, I always like to do that. My memos, people say, where'd you get that from? I didn't pull out of a particular part of.
But you don't, you don't have to attach to.
Oh, no, I won't do that. Yeah, I just, that I.
Because we got to keep it simple that we can all understand it and, and more importantly, execute it.
Yeah, I had Tony not looking at a specific charge of this committee. It's a committee to make a recommendation and their, their feedback. So if you're not giving them a specific charge to come up with a conclusion, I think that's different. I think you can get away with, uh, the sunshine.
I don't like the term get away with.
Yes. Okay. Well, I, I don't.
You and I have known each other long enough. But no, that, it, once again, the scope of the role and function will determine whether or not they are, they are subject to the sunshine law. And so that's the guidance I'll give to the board and say, here's how the panel needs to be directed and constituted so as to it's not going to fall to sunshine law.
Sure.
And my concern is with regards to, if you have district manager management, you're going to send them to the companies. That's where I get concerned about. It might be that employee who's designated district manager, but he works for a corporation. There may be an internal covenant not to compete between that private organization and that individual. That if we start to solicit that individual, I don't want us to be accused of trying.
Let me, let me, here's the, the approach that I would take. We have a list of potential networking opportunities, two hundred and twenty-five. We reach out to them, letting them know that we have an open position. Do they know of anyone that's interested? We will send them some information. If they are, they can pass that along. If they choose to inquire or if they choose to apply, that is beyond our control. We are not soliciting. We are approaching, we approach these individuals.
They may have just gone through this and had two great candidates and picked one.
Right. We've seen that. You know, we know that.
I like, that's a good approach.
That's the way that I, that's the way I would do it.
FYI.
Okay. So I think that our, I think our board decision and, and you guys, I, I don't want to put words in everyone's mouth, but still need to aggressively be looking for both these positions. We might get lucky and while we're interviewing one, find the other one. But we do need to be looking at these as to, uh, actually, there's three openings. Um, we still have the business manager. Laura is accurate. I know that you were looking at.
Yeah, it's still open.
Okay. So we actually have three positions, but our two priorities, I think Laura's pretty, working really diligently on the, on the business manager. But the district manager and that public works or operations or whatever we're going to call it. Uh, we need to be focused on both of, both of those, but I think we might have an opportunity, uh, to cross paths. Uh, but we need to be focused on the, uh, switching for what we have in the, in the description.
Doug, there's a good chance that when we're doing both of these, there's a very good chance that if we would hit somebody with a, uh, strong, let's take for example, uh, uh, stormwater management background. However, maybe not the skillset in the admin side or anything beyond the strong, uh, stormwater management side. You might just found your person who could be your public works guy. You know, that's what we're, we're really looking for. So doing these together, the only thing I see that, uh, we need to come up with, and Cal I think can do it real quick, like, is just to come up with what the summary of the, uh, duties and responsibilities of the public works guy is going to be such that we're looking at that all the time. Because there could be people that would not quite meet our requirements on district manager, but they sure as hell, if they had a stormwater management background, could sure as hell meet our, uh, public works, uh, deal real quick, like.
Yeah. And I think where, where, where I was coming from the angle is, I think we need to look for these independently because there are some very specific things in the, in the public works or, or, you know, pond management, stormwater. But I think we might find viable candidates in our district manager search. And matter of fact, we have, and we have an example of that, uh, today. So I think we might be able to run across, um, talent for multiple positions in the district manager. But I still think we also need to be looking for that stormwater, public works type position as well. Um, and what I would, I, we're in a very favorable position, which means we have the flexibility to hire whatever we can find. Um, so we might run across other talent in other areas. And I think we have the ability to hire this on because at this point, I think it's, you know, if we find talent, we need to figure out ways to, to bring them on. So, um, any additional questions for, uh, for Cal?
Cal, does that ask, Cal, does that give you direction or you thinking of something else?
No, no, I, I've got direction and I think we can work with that.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. Moving forward.
Can we just, can I summarize what I think I heard?
Yes, sir.
Very quickly. I hope it's quick. Number one, we are going to send out an inquiry, a notice or something to the people on that list to let the state of Florida people know we have it open. We're looking for people.
Correct.
That's number one. Number two, we're going to take the current three candidates that we have already been vetted to this point, for lack of a better word. The chair is going to interview them. We're setting up a system with Tony's guidance for staff interview. Depending on the, the compilation of those two events, then we'll move forward with the board doing at least preliminary for these first couple of candidates.
The process is premier does an initial vetting. It goes to chair, review, staff, panel, and then board.
Okay.
Then board.
So we're not letting them hang out there.
We don't know exactly what the board.
We have a process.
We don't know if that's going to be a panel or individual, but the board will have line of sight.
Okay.
To any final candidates that, that pass through.
I'm all over.
Two previous day.
Yeah. And what I suggest is that memo will be in your board packet for the twentieth meeting as to the staff panel, how that can be conducted.
All right, great.
Well, it should be maybe even started by that, Doug. I, I'd rather that the board confirm that, you know, I, I think the board needs to establish the parameters. And after looking at the sunshine law, what those parameters can be.
And Laura, what I would say is if you can work with, um, probably Gary and Cal on, like for the staff panel, we need to come up with a list of, of kind of questions. Uh, because I'd like, what we need to do is when, anytime we interview, it needs to be replicatable. We need to ask the same question so we can measure candidate A, the candidate B, candidate C. So it has to be repeatable. So if we can come up with a list of questions that we're going to ask all the candidates, it would just help us.
I can look and see if there was something from the last time you went through this too, and we can maybe.
And I can help you too, coming up with some stuff. So, okay, great.
Okay.
Um, I'll move on to assistant manager update. Any?
Mine is real quick. Uh, the, the final modular restoration repairs started yesterday. So they got the mold all out and now they're putting everything back in. Um, we, I have a kickoff meeting tomorrow, uh, with block for the license plate readers to get that installation all coordinated. So I'm hoping by the time I, we have the meeting on the twentieth, I should have a timeline for you. And, uh, Vicky brought to our attention that there are ten-year agreement, interlocal agreement with Lee County comes up. It expires this June. I connected with Pam Keys and Rich Culp to get that process started. So we make sure there's no auto renew clause in it. So to get that process started, I also forwarded it to Tony. So he would have a copy of what we had from before. So just to let you know that it is in the works because I know that it's government stuff and it'll take some time to get through. And we want to make sure that that does not expire. They are interested in keeping it going. So.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Leslie, did you have anything for us today?
Leslie, Rhetoric Utility Billing Manager. I just want to give two quick updates. One, on the AMI metering side. Uh, we continue to see the same issues we have been with MIUs and ETRs. We do have lower than average reporting numbers primarily because of the backlog of inventory. There is currently a shipping and manufacturing delay with the issuance of MIUs and the batteries. So we're waiting for that. We should receive that by the end of this month and we can get started on MIUs. Us, staff has been working on ETRs. Center has had, uh, one person on site the entire month of December and part of October. And they have committed to ship a crew of people over here once with backlog of MIUs arrive to get us caught up to where we need to be.
What's that number? What's that volume?
Right now, we have, um, an estimated about five hundred MIUs that are not reporting and about two hundred and ninety-three ETRs that are showing errors.
So let me ask you a question that Kenny may have to weigh in on this. At what point do we need to start working on a plan?
Oh, that's what, at the January twentieth meeting, based upon the fact.
Can you repeat that, Doug? I didn't hear what you said.
I said, at what point do we start looking at future planning? And then Tony jumped in and said on the, on the twentieth, twentieth meeting.
We're going to do a memo in two, two aspects. One with regards to foreline, one with regards to center line, center as, and possible budgets for and possible requested action.
All right. So we're going to, we'll talk more about it then. I don't want to, I don't want to get into that conversation today.
That's the legal scope versus the capital scope of any other meter.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I have the newsletter that, um, I have attached a copy of. That was just a, a draft. We did some other revisions, but that is going out as a mailed and electronic copy to all residents on the January fifteenth bill.
Yeah.
Those are the parts that we're looking for. Part of the national supply chain issue. Or is it something local and?
Uh, it's national. The, um, they're having an issue with their manufacturer on the batteries out of Israel. So that's the primary issue.
Okay. But it's not stuck on a ship in San Diego, far as we know.
Far as we know.
Okay.
Well, that's all. If there's any questions.
Kenny, do you want to just?
Leslie, when you, excuse me, Leslie, when you say you're having troubles with those five hundred readings, is that meaning we're going fully, uh, the old fashioned way and reading these by hand?
Correct.
What, what kind of a, a demand on, uh, staff has that taken?
Um, on the update, they'll see billing exceptions. There's a total of twelve, a little over twelve hundred. Uh, we took all staff and I think it took about two weeks and a half to get them done.
And if you can, if you can document the, the time and money spent on it.
Yeah. What I was getting to is on a monthly basis, no, on, on a bimonthly basis, since we read them, we do it every two months. What is the time we're inordinately spending doing what we expected the meters to do? This being caused by man hours of staff?
It's probably eighty hours a, a month, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
I mean.
I'd be happy as hell with this eighty hours. It sounds to me like it's a lot more than that.
Yeah. So I would estimate it's more than that.
More than that?
Bill cycle. Yeah.
But if you can generate that and provide that to me also.
So basically by the time we, we finish the manual reads, we have to start over from, from the beginning. Like it's a continuous cycle. So it's a full-time job. Just check the meters.
Right.
Okay.
As soon as finished manual reads.
It's probably forty hours.
Uh, we dedicate, yeah.
Ongoing every week.
Right. Dedicate usually four to five days out of the month where all our entire field staff does nothing but go out.
Go out and read meters.
Read meters or repair MIUs.
So that's, not only is that, uh, labor, but there's also productivity loss in other areas. So I think, yeah, that's what you were getting to is what, what's the negative impact? It's not only labor cost to read the meters, but there's also loss in productivity in, in other areas because we're having to take staff away from their, their day-to-day jobs, which not only impacts the district from a resource perspective, but also in our delivery, uh, to our residents. So, okay.
Ongoing cycle.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. Appreciate it. So Kenny, can you, we had that conversation before the holidays, um, around the, uh, the build out here, the build. Um, and I don't know, have we, did we brought an update to the board yet?
Yeah, we were planning on doing a, a real comprehensive one on either, I believe it's next meeting or the first meeting.
All right.
Yeah. But yeah, we're, we're still working on that.
Okay. I'll hold on. Okay. Thank you. Um, Scott?
Scott Connell, I have in your board book, the, uh, monthly, uh, report, an update on the various projects. Uh, this was written on December twentieth. So a few things have happened since then. Lake Bank stabilization for ninety-three. As reported prior, uh, we had a final inspection yesterday and it's substantially complete. There's some, uh, tutorials being planted on Monday and a, a few items remaining on the punch list. And as Stephen addressed, the lake bank restoration for the next round, he talked about that. That that's preparing to, to go out to bid. Uh, so tentatively, we're looking at going out the end of the month, twenty-fourth and have a, uh, bids received, uh, February fourteenth right now, and, and that is to be finalized. Uh, Daniel's preserved drainage concerns. Uh, I think Laura is going to address this in, in her topic. So I'll just pause on that. Questions later. Um, regarding the GIS with Passarela for the, uh, Gateway proper area. And, uh, we have a meeting set up for next, uh, Tuesday, the eleventh with Passarela. Uh, we've done some preliminary conversations and, and review of, of merging that system with our operation management system and, uh, looks favorable. So we're going to have our, our first sit-down discussion and talk over some of the tasks and questions, uh, as a, like I say, our first, first meeting, first go around. Uh, the bathymetric study, the core samples and the aeration design. Staff is still reviewing that, uh, with assistance from Tetra Tech and some others. I think that we'll be able to be, uh, within the next, we'll probably have a summary for the next meeting on how we, uh, propose to do that as far as, uh, request or proposal. Want to run it by others? The utility, the proposed forced main irrigation through the easement, uh, the FPL easement, um, that's still ongoing. We, uh, talked to Fred yesterday. Tetra Tech is, uh, uh, they're already performing, uh, some, uh, as-built underground locations along Gateway Boulevard for the existing utilities in the area that we are looking at a proposed tie-in. So that work is ongoing. And we haven't finalized the alignment yet. We have a, uh, we're, I would guess, you know, we're seventy-five percent there. We still need to work on the southern end as it crosses Griffin. The resurfacing Sherman Soccer Complex roadway, um, we, let's see here, the contractor has applied for the, uh, permits from the county. Hopefully we'll have those next week. And then, uh, once he has that in hand, he'll be able to sit down. We'll schedule some hard dates. We're looking at, uh, mid to late February for that resurfacing.
So what we'll need to do is if we're not doing it in between league activity, we do have an opportunity. So if we need to shut this side down, whether it's the parking lots and the road, we can coordinate with the school and divert all, uh, league-related parking over to the school area. So the reason I'm telling you that is because we can get around, um, having to do sections or whatever. So if we need to, it'll be a little bit of an inconvenience, but, um, depending on, if we can't do it in between seasons, which is a small window, then we can work with the school and just divert air, uh, everything over to that side, which would allow us to shut this side down completely. And we have to shut down the dog park. So we would need to.
We're not going to be down more than a week or something.
Excuse me. Tentatively, what we're looking at, and I appreciate that information. I was not aware of that. The contractor and I talked about, um, doing the, uh, east parking lot first, maybe doing demo on both parking lots first. And then coming back, closing down the east parking lot, doing that paving one day, doing the west parking lot another day. Uh, maybe two days each. So you pave it and then you stripe it. And then, uh, on the way out, they do the roadway. So, and he's picking dates in between activity on the soccer fields. We might, we'll keep one parking lot open, maybe close the other.
Yeah.
And maybe use the school as an overflow. That's excellent.
What I would probably do is if you're going to do it, well, I guess you could shut the gate and close people off. But if you needed to just shut everything down, there's access.
Yeah.
Both in the backfields and here through the school. So.
Okay, great.
So just leaving that. And bumpers in, in scope, painting the, the bumpers?
We're going to be doing that after, they're going to remove them, do their milling and paving and all that. You're going to put them back down, stripe it, and we're going to pressure wash and paint those in-house.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I just have a question. Should we, while they're doing that, should we remove it and maybe pressure wash now and have it ready? So on the?
No, because in the removing and the replacing, some are going to be damaged. And then we're going to have new ones all put back in place and. And then we're going to have new ones all put back in place and we'll be able to clean them right then and there afterwards.
And I was going to replace them with the concrete or with the rubber? Because I saw, I think we have a mix in the parking lot.
We do have a mix and I'm gonna. I would prefer the concrete versus the rubber. Because I think they will last longer and we have more concrete than we do rubber. So when we reposition them, we're probably trying to categorize them and put all the rubber on one edge.
Or just bring out, because if there's not many rubber, bring all the rubber here and take the concrete from here to there. So we keep it all the same.
I know some will break, so we'll need some extra. So that's why I put in that allowance.
And we, I'm sorry, Scott. And so we do have some sidewalk. So we should probably coordinate pressure washing the sidewalks. So when we have a nice new parking lot, we've got a nice.
We have some damaged sidewalk that we're going to remove and replace prior in-house. And the pressure washing, I guess, can be added to the operational task. Yep. Good idea. Master irrigation system control, we're, I haven't made any headway since I last reported. So I'll need to get back on that along with the, the street lighting, so.
Any, any major concerns or?
No, nothing, nothing that I have.
Alright, great.
I had, Doug, I had an issue for Scott. Scott, we talked about the FPL easement and the irrigation and where we are on irrigation demand as it relates to Lee County and our contract with the LCU on the use of wastewater treatment flow. Have you had any opportunity to get with the people over at the wastewater treatment plant? And let's say get the last two years readings of what our pumped flow for irrigation is and our produced wastewater volume is so that we know just exactly what our limitations are in the summertime of having to get rid of water when we have, let's say excessive rainfall? Have you had a chance to be able to get with the county and find out the availability of those records?
I have started collecting that data and, and that's in the works, one of my ongoing tasks. And so hopefully in another week or so, I'll be able to provide that information to you.
Okay, with one of the issues that you and I had talked about that I want to make sure that everybody was aware of. It was my understanding that in the summertime, and it sounds like I was wrong, that in the summertime, we were only using wastewater treatment plant effluent for our irrigation. I'm finding that we are even in the summertime during wet periods supplementing it with groundwater. I guess my question is, is that how much water are we using in the summertime during the wet season? Or is there even a differentiation between the wet season and the dry season that would necessitate us having to use groundwater in the summertime when we get all the rain?
Okay, what I like to do, Mr. Tinkle, is to let's gather, let me gather the data. Then I'll set up a follow-up meeting between yourself and Kenny and, and myself and whoever else. And we can sit down and look at these particular questions so we can review them together and then be able to make a presentation.
Yeah, and then break it back.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, it's ongoing. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll move on to action items for a gateway conservation area maintenance. Al, I think you've got this one.
Fair enough. Well, it was coming up, just one item I did not mention earlier. And it wasn't covered under utilities, that the club that called it gateway has signed the transfer documents for the water withdrawal permit. So everything seems to be going well.
Okay.
In that regard, and I appreciate Kenny's help on that and his patience also. And his every now and then a little swift kick.
Okay, Al, you're up.
Hi, Al Harris, Gateway Services Stormwater Specialist. I have brought in an agenda item for your review to award the conservation area maintenance to Cross Creek Environmental. There is a $868 difference between the two lowest bidders. I feel, or you feel, I discussed it with management, that Cross Creek would be the most advantageous to the district. And because we do have so many conservation areas that interface with the ponds. That is along the conservation areas. It's where you'll have the torpedo grasses and other exotic weeds growing out of. So if you have one contractor doing them both, as you had mentioned, the last time the stormwater maintenance was bid out, that now you have one contractor to follow up with and you just get a more smoother service out of that, that way.
Any questions for Al around the?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have a motion to?
I'll make the motion to accept Cross Creek.
And Tony, is there?
Second.
No, to, yeah, to basically follow the recommendation of staff and the findings by staff and to award the gateway conservation area maintenance contract to Cross Creek Environmental for one year.
So my motion is second. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay on them. New day, new dawn. Okay, moving on to the next, Daniel's preserve storm drain modification, Extreme Diver. Laura.
Okay, uh, we can talk about this back.
And here.
I forgot to turn my mic back on. We talked about this back in October and we originally, we had, MRI had done some pipe inspection, cleaning and discovered that there's some issues with the 48 inch drainage pipes over in Daniel's Preserve. We discussed some different approaches to fixes for, for those pipes. MRI was not, didn't feel that they were able to do the approach that we wanted to take, which was to insert the elbow, I guess, for lack of a better term, in the end of the existing 48 inch pipes. Their approach was to install new pipes between the houses and then tap into the existing 48 inch pipes at the street and do that from each side. So there was, there were a lot of concerns, homeowner, you know, houses digging between pools, all those kinds of things. It was not an ideal approach. Scott reached out to Extreme Divers and Rob went, or Brad, sorry, went and on his own dime, on his own dime, went and had a look at, I think it was four, between four and six, lakes four and six that we're going to do. This will be a pilot. He's going to use an aluminum elbow that they'll put in, they'll insert, they can float it out, sink it down, put it in the pipe and seal it in there. And then the tops of each of those, those elbows will have grates on them to keep, for safety reasons, so nothing, no one can fall in or anything. That completely eliminates the digging, the attaching, the capping off of the other pipes, all of that. So he was going to give us the same rate that he's giving Pelican. The bid, the total bid is not to exceed $60,000. So he's charging us, it's three, daily rate of $3,000. So I'm just looking for your approval to go ahead and, and.
So just for clarification, Laura, Stephen Agapi or Danny have confirmed this is maintenance under the south Florida permit, doesn't require any modification?
I did not check that.
Okay, I think you just have. Okay, okay, so I'm comfortable with that then.
What, what was the other?
I just got.
It was 60, well, it depended on which approach we take. We didn't settle because they gave us two different quotes. One was for a 24 inch pipe and one is for a 30 inch pipe and I.
The MRI.
The MRI, yeah, because we didn't make it, we never decided which way we wanted to go.
I thought it was significant.
They were higher. Yeah, they were both higher than, than this. And there's much less risk this way. We wanted to go between the houses and we don't have to worry about damage and all that. This was the original approach that we had discussed wanting to take. And he did tell me that they've done similar work in Pelican, so he's very confident that it'll work.
You're good, Bob, with what they've done?
Yeah, so I'll make a recommendation, we accept staff proposal.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, any items to pull on consent agenda five, A through G?
Nope.
No.
Yes, sir. Oh, did you say no or Doug?
No, no. None.
For for future board business president's council meeting at Pelican Preserve, Magnolia Room, in the Magnolia Room on Thursday, February 24th. So that's the next president's council. Do we need to work on the agenda?
You can send any agendas, things to Georgia, she'll take care of compiling all of that.
So board, if there are items that you think we need to be having discussions with the president's council, you'll send your ideas over.
And I'll ask her to reach out to the distribution list as well for their suggestions.
Okay. Supervisor comments, we'll start with you, Supervisor Guy.
I have nothing, thank you.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes, it's my understanding that if not the next meeting, the first meeting in February, the county is going to be prepared to come to us with possibly a couple of options relative to the fountain at the Griffin Gateway Boulevard intersection. Showing us what they have in mind of what we might be able to do and what we might be able to look at in the way of a fountain on that project.
Great.
The other one is where have we gotten anywhere with our discussion of the trees along Gateway Boulevard and a report back from our arborists?
That's a good question. Laura, any updates on?
I I did get a, an email back from Rob, not Rob. Dan.
Dan?
The, on the arborist, he gave me a quote, I'm trying to find it, so give me a second.
So you'll have it ready for the next.
I will, yes.
So we've got something back, staff is reviewing it and we'll have it at the next board meeting, Ed.
And then the last one is I've been making some contacts through my prior company relative to this meter deal and hope to have more on it. But I can pretty well assure you, what I'm learning is, is that we aren't the only ones having problems, people.
Yeah. Well, hold your findings until the 20th, Ed. So, yeah, thanks for your diligence there, due diligence.
That's all I had.
Great. Bob?
First is the, we're aware that there are some issues with the easements in the Casella neighborhood near the weir, where we don't have, where the easements were not constructed properly. Is that the best way to say that?
Or that there have been modifications to the physical conditions of the easement so that the slopes are greater than not, than appropriate for the equipment and I think less.
We have a safely do our job.
And less room to maneuver in the 20 foot LME.
So this has the potential of being kind of significant and we're pursuing right now, waiting for response from, from Lennar. They are aware of it and Al brought it up.
And these are.
In a timely manner.
Can, can we put this in English? Bob, is this, are we saying that we have slope issues in various areas?
It's one area in particular, but I'll let Scott explain it, but it's more than slope issues.
Yeah, what, what might, what might be helpful even before the next board meeting is Scott can send around the photos and the cross-sections and I think the board can appreciate it. I didn't appreciate it until I saw.
Is this a soils issue or a construction issue?
That's cool.
It's a construction issue. It's the placement of the the berm, the top of slope. And as it relates to where the easement lies. The part of the easement is over the toe of slope, running down the bank.
So Scott, you're, Scott, you're involved in it?
I am, I've been out there, I'm aware and tuned in.
Okay, then I, I don't have any other questions, Ed.
We could relate into a wet building if we had carpets.
Well, yeah, also the berm is, is traps water.
Created a bathtub.
Several things, so.
So we go all over Lake 38 one more time.
Yeah, we met with the Tetra Tech out there and outlined it and they did a lot of measuring and, and things and detailed it very well. So I'll, you want to provide that?
But I definitely want to give a shout out to Al for finding it through.
Okay, oh, great, well, Al just left, so I shouldn't pass that along. Would this result in any task authorization needed for Tetra Tech to do any additional?
Think so.
I wouldn't think so. The, the onus is back on Lennar to correct it.
Yeah, I think the review is within the scope of the existing agreement with Tetra Tech and then working with Scott.
I concur, yep.
The second thing is my every meeting recommendation that we get staff to report on the pond bank with the pond maintenance report that we see, it was at AIM, that report. And we've asked our staff to come forward with the recommendations. And every time I bring this up, then it gets deferred, but I'll bring it up again.
Okay.
This is the one about tutorials, this is the report that said about the tutorials.
Yeah.
So we're looking at staff to review that and make recommendations to us.
So Laura, will you take that back?
I think that was the direction, right, that you already, we already asked.
I've made the proposal a couple of times, it's never gotten a vote.
Well, now that we've gone through the holidays and we've had significant time, we'll put pressure on staff to deliver.
Okay. That's it.
All you?
Nothing.
Okay, nothing for me. Let the record show.
That when Mr. Tinkle's not here, we get done.
4:26.
Okay, so we will adjourn at 4:26. Thank you all very much. Be safe out there.
See y'all.